Excellent ladies and gentlemen. Father, Lord in heaven, thou art in heaven. Thy kingdom come, and Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven, and in the city of Montevista tonight. Thank you. You need the full call?
Counselor Howard?
I'm here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Mayor Kurtem Sagala is absent and has been excused. A quorum has been declared.
We have any modifications to the agenda?
No.
Any approval of consent agenda minutes regular meeting from July twentieth? Twenty-three? Need a? Ninety-three? Twenty-three, okay. Review of accounts. Review and approval of accounts payable. Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been written and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes regular meeting from July twentieth twenty-two, twenty-three. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Hi.
Counselor Locke?
Hi.
Counselor Lorenz?
Hi.
Mayor Becker?
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments. Appointment of Jill Martinez and J.J. Mondragon to Rio Grande County Library Board.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a letter, dear council members. On June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Board of Rio Grande County Library District voted to recommend appointment of Jill Martinez and J.J. Mondragon to the Rio Grande County Library Board. As stated by the bylaws, replacement to the Rio Grande County Library Board of Trustees shall be appointed by recommendation of the Library Board of Trustees and shall be ratified by two-thirds majority of the vote of the following legislative bodies: the Board of Trustees of the Town of Del Norte, the City Council of the City of Montevista, the Board of County Commissioners of Rio Grande County, and the Board of Trustees of the Town of South Fork. We ask tonight that you please approve the appointment of Jill Martinez and J.J. Mondragon to the Rio Grande County Library Board District. Best regards, Philip McCain.
So we just need a motion to approve those two gentlemen? So I'm going to approve Jill Martinez and J.J. Mondragon to the Rio Grande County Library Board.
I have to abstain, so.
Just.
I'll say that.
Just.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jill Martinez and J.J. Mondragon to the Rio Grande County Library Board. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Hi.
Counselor Locke?
Hi.
Mayor Becker?
Hi.
Motion carries with three votes of yes and one of stay.
What is citizen comments? City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting. Do you have any citizen comments? Please sign that paper up there and state your name. Thank you.
And my name is Cheryl Smith. And I am here with Community Resources and Housing and Development, and we're also known as CRHDC. So thank you, Mayor Becker and City Council, for allowing me to make some comments tonight. I am here representing CRHDC because we're in the process of building new homes in the Tierra del Sol subdivision here in Montevista. And I am here asking to partner with you guys so that we can address the housing shortage that exists here in our community. CRHDC, with our mutual self-help housing program, can provide affordable housing for our hard-working community members so that they can achieve the dream of home ownership and invest in their families' futures. The self-help program allows families to achieve a mortgage by allowing them to contribute their sweat equity during the build instead of a down payment and closing costs that most families cannot afford. Our housing program also sets our families up financially by keeping our material and labor costs reasonable so that when a family moves into their home, they already have equity in the home before they even make the first payment. For example, our four-bedroom home right now here in Montevista appraises for around three hundred thousand, and with the amazing contributions of our local suppliers and vendors, the cost of that four-bedroom home is around two sixty-five. So the difference of thirty-five thousand is true equity for our families. Who is CRHDC currently building homes for, you ask? We are currently today building homes for members of our local police departments, fire, ambulance, nurses, teachers, Head Start employees, local restaurant workers, waste management, and our Grove Facility workers. So in other words, we're building homes for our community. So please partner with CH, CRHDC and myself to get the word out that our mutual self-help is currently building in Montevista, and we need hard-working individuals or families from our community to apply for our housing program. I will myself be attending all the local school board meetings in the next few weeks and along with the Montevista Chamber of Commerce meetings. And if you guys have any other suggestions on any outreach sources that you feel that may be beneficial to our housing program, let me know. And thank you again for your time.
How many homes are you guys? I know we had that.
Mm-hmm.
There was a.
The ribbon cutting?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And there was like fifty.
We have fifty-two lots available.
Okay, I heard they haven't been taken up yet.
I, we just broke ground today on six. And we're currently forming the next six that will break ground October one. But there's still many lots available. The other thing that we're doing, which is a new, for us as a corporation, we're actually going to be offering contract-built homes. So instead of the families participating in the self-help portion of the mortgage and the requirements, we're actually going to build a contract-built home that they can purchase at the end. Because some of our families in the community are hard, hard workers, and they work long hours, and they don't have time to give every weekend to do the sweat equity hours that it takes to do the self-help. So we are going to break ground mid-September on our first contractor-built home.
Good.
And that home itself will have different upgrades. There's custom cabinets, solid surface countertops. You know, a lot of upgrades that our self-help is more modest, more medium, so. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Sure. My question is, are you in our, kind of our local contacts since Janet retired?
I, I am your local contact, yes.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to get your phone number and I'll call you next week.
Here, I'll just do you better than that. I'll give you this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, I'm pretty much doing Janet's role. All of the reporting, all of the self-help, the program. The only piece I'm not doing is managing the office employees. So everything was self-help.
Okay.
Could we have one more? Or you need a?
Do you need more? Here, Mayor Becker, I just have more.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The other citizen comments?
Yes, that's me. Oh, no, you're. You're. You can speak in the.
Yeah, you.
Yeah. Marie? I'll call you out. Lauren, okay. You got?
I guess we're here.
Okay, we'll move on to scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to file the appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So URA president, present a proposition one, two, three.
My name is Andrew Ashley. I'm the Housing Development Team Manager with the Department of Local Affairs Division of Housing. Also on URA work. Just want to talk to council and the mayor about proposition one, two, three, which was passed by voters last November. Essentially frees up about three hundred million dollars a year for affordable housing in Colorado. There are a couple of agencies in the state that are going to receive that money. The Division of Housing, we will get about a hundred million. My office of, it's the Office of Housing Finance and Sustainability or something like that. We are getting about sixty million dollars. That money is specifically for homeownership opportunities. So we'll use it for an expansion of down payment assistance programs and building homeownership, like homeownership units. In order for jurisdictions to qualify for that funding, that jurisdiction has to opt in to Prop one, two, three. It's a very simple process. From what I've heard, it takes about fifteen minutes. We have our website for it. But what opting in means is the city of Montevista essentially will commit to increasing the number of affordable units by nine percent over three years, so three percent a year. That for Montevista, I think is about sixty-three units over three years, which is a lot. However, there is no financial recourse if the city doesn't meet that sixty-three units. If there are units built using Prop one, two, three money, you know, the housing is not in a claw that anybody stays in the projects. You know, we're trying to incentivize affordable housing, not, you know, punish jurisdictions for not meeting the nine percent. So it's a huge opportunity. Really what it does is just open the door for funding for developers who want to build affordable housing in Montevista or, you know, whatever community that decides to opt in. And I think so far we've had probably about, I want to say about twenty-five to thirty jurisdictions opt in. Salida was the first. But it runs the gamut from Salida, Telluride, to Flagler. So there's a lot of communities that are opting in. It's a simple process, and I would definitely encourage the city to move forward with that. And happy to answer any questions on the program that I can.
So those happen if we don't hit the nine percent.
Nothing.
Nothing.
So essentially, for twelve months after, so that fourth year, the town would be ineligible for Prop one, two, three funding. However, as somebody who works at the Division of Housing, I suspect if there was a project that was like ready to go, you know, like ready to break ground, homeownership opportunity for a hundred percent AMI households, we would likely just use a different funding source. We've got nine, ten different funding sources that we can use. So, you know, we're not trying to say like, oh, you know, you've got, you know, a fifteen-year project that was going to be, well, we're not going to fund that. We're going to fund it because we want to see this bill, so.
So Andrew, I. So does the website have that baseline on it then that you got to establish?
It does. So there's actually two, and I can send this, I think you guys probably got it, and I can, you know, extend it out also. We have, it's called Engaged Olesay. That kind of gives a lot of backgrounds on Prop one, two, three. There's also a baseline commitment, like help tool, that you can have, like, you know, use. So the data that drives that number of units that increase is from the American Community Survey. And so, you know, there's a couple of different sliders that you can fill out or, you know, like alter to, you know, see where that baseline commitment would be, that number of affordable units, that nine percent. And then there's also the opt-in website. So there's like, there's three websites. The baseline assistance tool, the actual opt-in website, and then kind of the background website.
So does the commitment by the council have to be in any formal frame? Or can just a vote do it, or do you need a resolution?
My understanding is it does not take a resolution by council. It can be a vote. So I don't think that there's a whole lot of like backup documentation that, you know, Montevista would have to like upload to the site.
There's not. There's no ordinance. There's no there's no resolution. You basically just say that you want to opt in. And the way we came up with sixty-three was a contact with local lenders, and the biggest thing that plays, the biggest thing that changes, the number that makes it greater or lesser is the mortgage interest rate. As it climbs higher, then obviously affordable numbers go down because the houses get more expensive. So putting it at six point five, which was the current rate, came in sixty-three, which made an affordable house about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that's kind of the line that we're moving at. As of right now, the last two months, we've had eight, our building permits come through. Seven of those will be affordable homes. So we're already seeing things that are coming. We've had two different developers reach out and ask, hey, are you guys going to opt in? Because if you are, then I'm interested in building in Montevista because I can do these things with these funds, and Montevista meets homes based on the housing study that the Housing Coalition just did. So by opting in, which is what I will be asking for in my presentation or my, my report later in council, it just gives us the opportunity to do those kinds of things. There is some funding out there for jurisdictions, but it's super small. It's like land banking to buy lands to build homes on. Things like that is really the parts. And then I think there's some infrastructure in there. But that really hasn't got a whole lot of development. There's a lot more information on what funding is available. And I have two webinars, one at the mid-month and one at the end of month, that will cover the municipalities. And I'm going to go with the small municipality, which is five thousand and greater, because that's what we're on cusp of. And then we also have less than five thousand because we're at four thousand one hundred and sixty-two. So I'll sit on both and see what the lines are for what's, what's able and what's not for what fundings we can play for. But as you said, right now, we would be saying, we're going to try to get sixty-three homes. So odd. So odd. To talk about why it's a sixty-three, it goes off your current housing stock. We have a lot of low rent, low price housing stock in the, in Montevista because a lot of our housing stock is so old. So we have a high percentage of what would be considered affordable homes because of our current housing stock prices. That's why we have so many. It's not that we have an overabundance and all that. It's just that we have so many that it makes that percentage really high and start looking at the numbers. So.
We have sixty-three lots.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Right now, I'm looking at twenty, twenty-four unit apartment complex that's looking at it. I'm looking at eighteen townhomes. We have, we have lots available. Some of them require infrastructure upgrades, some of them won't, and then we'll go from there.
And besides the two hundred and sixty thousand, are there any other requirements to qualify as affordable housing?
So for the Prop one, two, three funds for homeownership that we are administering, those can be used for homeownership opportunities up to a hundred percent AMI. Which, you know, that's like what we're talking about, you know, your teachers, your police officers, your area media, yeah. I think for rental, it can still only be used for sixty percent AMI, but Chaffa, the Colorado Housing Finance Authority, they, I think, get about a hundred and seventy-five billion, something like that. Their, their is, like DJ mentioned, a really good program, which is pretty exciting. It's, you know, it's a a hundred percent loan value is my understanding. And essentially, you know, it would be, it would turn into a grant for the city. You know, if Montevista wanted to buy a piece of land to develop some housing on. As long as zoning was in place in five years and units were built in ten years, it turns into a grant. They also have debt and equity vehicles for kind of like larger rental projects. I'm not a hundred percent sure how those work yet, but in the future, it will be. Any other questions?
Questions?
One good.
Lauren, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
If there are any other questions, most of the city staff's got my email address, so, you know, get in touch and we can always answer. So thanks for letting me present.
Very good. All right. Nita? Seeing approved financial report for June.
We have, council members. I included in your packet the financial report for the month of April. And we finished, not April, I'm sorry, June. I don't know where I am. We finished fifty percent of the fiscal year. The cash balance for, in the main checking account for the federal fund ends at three point four million. Water fund has five hundred and thirty thousand. Sewer fund has seven hundred and fourteen thousand. The general fund has four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Revenue excess of expenditures, water fund is seventy-eight thousand, sewer fund is ninety-five thousand. The total expenditures percent of the approved budget amounts, general fund is forty-three percent. Water fund is thirty-four percent, and sewer fund is twenty-five percent. The comparatives for the account receivable from this year to last year shows the general fund differences were pretty insignificant. The water fund had a decrease, which was mainly related to the prior reconciliation of the tax lien accounts, which I keep saying that over and over. The sewer fund have had an overall increase this year, though. And that was, that's mainly related to the increase in the service rates and then also sort of reconciliation of the tax. The accounts payable comparative. You can see last year was a lot higher than this year. This year was a decrease of about seventy-six thousand in the general fund. Last year, we had the expense for the fire cleanup. And Rob purchased some equipment, a double roller, last year. The water fund increase this year is related to a purchase of an insulator and then accrued compensated absences. The sewer fund increase of about thirty-six thousand is related to the engineering cost for the design through bidding and construction for the wastewater treatment facility. Comparing the revenue, revenues this year, the general fund has an overall increase of about a hundred and seventy-one thousand, and it's mostly related to tax revenues, grant revenues, charges for services. The zoning and subdivision permit fees have increased and sports fees have increased for the programs that Durbin is producing. And then interest and miscellaneous, we had more grants, refunds of expenditures, insurance claims, just some miscellaneous things. The over, water fund had an overall increase of about forty thousand, and that's related to earnings on investment and their water rights lease revenue that we've started to receive. The sewer fund overall increase of about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand is related to state grants and service charges and earnings on investments. The service charges for sewer this year totaled six hundred and ninety-one thousand versus four hundred and ninety-seven. A pretty significant increase. The general property tax revenue. The comparisons we've started doing, it can see that May shows a slight increase, and then June decreased a little bit over the last two years. Let me see that. Twenty-one and twenty-two are pretty follow the same pattern. And then this year, it's following the same pattern until you hit May and June, and then it changed a little bit. The sales tax revenue. It started, it's starting to level up in May and June. When you compare it to the last two years, could this be a pattern in the way I estimated? The city sales tax revenue. It has leveled off in April and May, and then we had a slight increase in June for the city. The total tax revenue is you can, it's kind of got the same ups and downs, but you can see that this year for total tax revenue, we have a slight increase with the exception of March, but all the other months have increased over the last two years. The expenditures comparative hasn't changed much from the previous month's general fund. And water and sewer all have increased mostly because of wages and benefits and insurance costs. We haven't had any, aside from the report in May, we haven't had any additional unexpected expenses that we've spent, so. General fund revenues, the monthly comparison for that. General fund revenues average about three hundred and eighty-five thousand. We have increases in February, April, and June, which is mostly from the tax revenue that we received. Expenditures average about three hundred and eight thousand a month. We had a large increase in March, which I have gone over before related to the set fine payment valley through theater. But. Then the budget comparison. We are still operating under budget. We're about seven percent under budget. And some departments may be over, some are under, but over and under, pretty good. We ended the month of June with the current ratio of three point six to one, and we have nine point nine three months of operating expenses in the unassigned fund balance. Have any questions?
Another good point. Yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like to approve it. Thank you, Yelena, for doing the slides.
Make a motion to approve the financial that's presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the June line councils as read. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Hi.
Counselor Locke?
Hi.
Counselor Lorenz?
Hi.
Mayor Becker?
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the June financials.
And I just wanted to give you an update on the audit. You guys, you're a con. I think she's working on the draft now. She wanted to present tonight, but with this being their first year of her wallsmith doing the audit and some changes in the way leases are accounted for now. Um, and some changes in the way leases are are accounted for now in governmental financing. Um. Took them a little bit longer because um, you know, last year we leased a lot of vehicles. And so we had to kind of dissect those and cover them really closely. Um, so, and then she probably won't present next meeting because I don't think Gigi's gonna had mentioned that she would be here, so she'll probably come the first of September to present the audit. But I don't expect um. Too many changes. So that um, they may move the set payment that we paid this year for the penalty to last year. Um, but I haven't gotten the um. The listing of journal entries that they think I need to do yet, so we'll see how that goes. I just wanted to give you an update about it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will have staff proposals, reports and actions planned. Mr. Andrew.
Good evening. So I'm here outside of cycle. I don't record at the end of the month. They're both of us time. I just have some actions and are a little pressing that I need to get agreed upon. Or disagreed upon uh, before uh, the end of this month. So um, first, we're not going to talk about that quite yet. Um, we're talking about a grant that I just submitted this week for DOLA. And that is uh, it was part of the Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grant, and it was for Main Street Live. Um, this was a grant wrote for about a million dollars, it's one million thirty four thousand. And what its intent would be, would be to uh, pave and redo the utilities and drop the electric on the alleys between Jefferson and Adams and Adams and Washington. It would redo those alleys and make those usable for activation as far as some of those back patios could be used for seating and other things, as well as just in general, you know, Lake Washington and Jefferson will go away. Um, good, you know, good city management as far as those things go. Um, but I do need your guys' approval to submit the grant, which I did hit go on yesterday because that's what we do for two days ago. Um, but I can retract if you guys don't want to do that grant. Um, it does have a twenty five percent match, which we will have to account for in next street budget. Uh, that match was like two hundred and thirty something thousand, give or take, when it was all said and done. Um, so that'll be a budget uh, conversation if we get the grants. Um, but I just need your guys' approval to keep the submission in or to pull it back. So I'd be asking for a vote on that.
Do you need a motion or is it not?
I need a motion, yes, please. I mean, I see events.
And this is one of the few grants that Department of Local Affairs has where you can actually pave alleys. And so we do have some merchants on both sides of the street that have voiced rate concern over delivery vehicles. Uh, getting up and down and people walking back there, as well as several of those commercial buildings have apartments up above. And so for their residents to be able to get in and out. So as we saw, this is a real opportunity to. If we're successful, it's kind of a long shot, but.
They only have seventeen million as far as the overall funds. Um, the next opportunity to apply for this grant would be in December. And our regional manager said that there probably won't be any funds left. They'll probably spend all of them in this go around, so I didn't want to wait. I wanted to go ahead and jump on it now, so that's why. It was kind of a short flash to bang. I think we found out about it a week and a half before it was due, and then stampede happened, so.
Well, help, help, help me word your motion. Please.
I, I just need.
I'm going to approve moving forward with this grant.
Line for the grant, yeah.
Is that, that's, that's specific enough?
Yeah.
I did.
Okay. I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward with the grant. Is there any more discussion on it? Nina?
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries for approval to apply for a dollar grant with a matching twenty five thousand.
You.
Sorry.
I guess.
Down right, they said it wrong.
Okay, Mike, that was gonna hurt.
Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah. This, this would have taken five years of the street fund all by itself to be able to fund it completely, so. This, if we can get it, it'll be great. Second thing is um, the city owns property. We own a lot of property in different places. Some of it is dead property that we have absolutely no use for. Some of it is very useful, such as Sky High. Uh, um, Public Works and those things. So we, Sanos Valley Cog has a regional housing project that they're trying to stand up. Um, they're going to do a feasibility study first. And with this feasibility study, they got a grant, so they applied for a grant from DOLA for about twenty thousand dollars. And a similar si- uh, situation happened in Southeast Colorado where they built sixty four homes. Um, at a price of under ninety nine thousand dollars in, I believe it was five different counties with different municipalities and those things. So Sanos Valley is looking to do a similar project. And the way that it works is some of it will go through Prop one, two, three money um, for land grants and for utilities and infrastructure and those things. Other things will come out of the municipality's pocket. Um, such as land donations and those kinds of things, which is what I'm going to ask for tonight. Um, we have two properties at the end of Stallow. Um, that are dead properties that the reason we own them is it will cost about a hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure to get water and sewer there. Um, they'll require E one lift um, to make it happen. So the city owns them because we cannot provide services as it is right now without spending a substantial amount of money for two homes. So. With the regional housing study, they're going to have some infrastructure grants that could possibly do that. Um, and before I approach the cog with these two pieces of property, I want to see if you guys are willing to place those two properties on the docket for feasibility study. Um, not saying they'd be accepted because it's a hundred thousand dollars to get infrastructure, but that is the only way I see those two properties ever being anything besides a park. And where they're located is on the end of town next to a field. Uh, that is Alphaba, so it's not really a viable place for a park either. Um, so. We already, the URA has already voted to place their four properties on that feasibility study. Uh, so that they can possibly build those homes as well. And we'll know that they're estimating about a two years flash to bank. The cool parts about the region housing product that, project that happened in Southeast Colorado was all sixty four homes were sold before it was stopped. Like when they broke ground, all sixty four homes were sold. These homes went for a hundred ninety nine thousand dollars. They rented a Kmart to store all of the refrigerators and stuff because they bought so many at one time in any other story. Um, so it was a really awesome project and it's designed for affordable house. That is its whole purpose. Um, so we'd be looking at, if you guys give those two pieces of property, six properties inside Monta Vista that would be added to that. Um, they would be de-restricted, they would um, be required to stay affordable for the life. Like imper- imper- perpetuity. Um, lots of words there. So I just have a couple of things I want to show you, uh. I can talk through all of those things. So this is the URA properties that they placed on underneath Newton's one, see the green ones. Um, then there's one in the seventh avenue. And there is, there's two others. One is above. Talking to City Monta Vista, and the other one's the green dots, uh, six thirty five Franklin. So those are the ones that URA owns that they've already voted to put it on um, the feasibility study. So the City Monta Vista. These are the two at the end of Stallow. Um, you can see they're up against an Alpapa field. And again, they're untenable without just help on the infrastructure side. Um, the road doesn't extend. It's kind of a dirt alley that gets there. Um, so there would be a substantial investment from uh, the infrastructure side to get those there. Uh, again, cog may not want them because it may make it not feasible. Um, however, I think it would be silly to not at least try and see if we can't get some homes built on some lots. Um, I'm asking for you guys to um, approve me putting them in the feasibility study with the understanding that if the cog accepts them and it pencils out that they will be given to this project for free without funds. Um, because that's how they keep the housing prices low, right? That's how that works. Uh, there has to be input from the city to make those things work, so. That's a.
But they recover the infrastructure.
I'm not asking for any infrastructure money. I'm not asking for any of that. I might say, hey, if they do the later pipe, can we not charge them for the tacky? That, that might be an ask, but we're not trying to lay the infrastructure down.
No, we're just doing it, but if it, if we went through the feasibility study, the cog would be.
The, the cog would be doing it through their infrastructure grants because they are going to be giving a grant for infrastructure. So that would be the, the, the selling point for that. Again, without doing it, they're never going to get sold. It's too expensive. So that's my request for that.
I'm going to put them in the infrastructure study.
Feasibility studies?
Feasibility study.
Okay.
Need a second.
Need a second for the motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to put the properties on Stallow.
Stallow, yeah.
On, in the feasibility study. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to put the two properties to be in Stallow on the feasibility study.
Okay, my last ask for the night is to approve for me to fill out the documentation for the opt-in of Prop one, two, three. Um, as previously discussed with Andrew, it's, I don't see downside to it. We looked real hard at penalties. Um, we've been talking about it for about three months as far as in the URA. Um, we've made phone calls to DOLA. Um, I've talked to multiple people. Their only thing is if we don't have sixty five homes, we're disqualified for a year at the end of the twelve months, we can do it again. Um, so I don't see a downside for us doing it. There is no recourse for failure, but it does give us the money and it does invite development, so. That's my third and final ask for the night, and then I can go home.
Go ahead.
My turn.
I'm going to let you go ahead and start the proposition one, two, three process.
You could second motion.
Yeah. Martha, can you say, I make a motion that?
I make a motion that we allow DJ Enderly to please put Monta Vista on with the proposition one, two, three.
That awesome thing. There, gotcha. So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to allow DJ Enderly to uh, opt in for the proposition one, two, three. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to allow for DJ to opt in for the proposition one, two, three.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, DJ. City clerk.
Can you do this?
I moved that anyone who is sick tonight, we call the meeting off. We call quits right now and go home. Take it a second.
I'm in.
So I will try to make this.
I think we have a motion on the floor.
No, I just said, I mean, I didn't actually second it because I knew that would make it not official. I'm in is reasonable.
No, no.
I'll try to make this short. So, um, just a few things I wanted to update you on. Is um, if you noticed in the paper today or Wednesday came out, um, is the article for the upcoming election for November seventh of twenty twenty three. Um, I just wanted to announce that you are encouraged to make a difference in the city of Monta Vista by participating in this year's election for the city council. Currently have two positions that will be up for election. The terms will run for four years, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. All prospective candidates are required to be United States citizens, citizens. At least twenty one years of age and qualified electors of the city of Monta Vista for at least one year prior to election date. All candidates must comply with the Fair Campaign Practices Act of the Colorado, the cons- the Colorado Constitution and file reports as required. All candidates must sign candidacy acceptance statements and candidates must choose to circulate their own petitions. Or have other circulate petitions on their behalf. I have scheduled an orientation that will be held on August seventh, twenty twenty three at six P M here at City Hall. Um, at that time, I will be handing out council packets that will be allowed to be circulated on the date of August eighth, twenty twenty three. Council packets will not be allowed to be given out until that evening or the morning of August eighth. If you have any questions, please contact me and I will walk anybody who is interested in running for those positions. And I will give them the information they are needed to run for those positions.
And what time is the orientation?
At six P M.
Six P M, what date? I'm sorry.
August seventh. So that'll be next Thursday.
Oh. Yes, seven.
That's funny, I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Um, and then the packets officially can start being um, circulated on August eighth. So I just wanted to make sure that I announced that and got that information out there. Other information that I wanted to update you on is that um, July tenth to the fourteenth, Lorna and I attended the Colorado Municipal Clerks Institute. Um, Lorna was finished her first year. Um, this is the institute where I was able to obtain my co- um, Colorado Municipal Clerk certification. So Lorna has finished her first year and will be able to finish two more years to obtain her certification. Um, at that conference, I was able to complete my first ten points of my hundred and twenty points to obtain my master certificate. Um, we currently have two new businesses, one restaurant that will open up next week. And one retail shop that will, um. They were supposed to do a um, ribbon cutting ceremony next week, but that's been postponed. Um, so I'm not sure when they will actually open their doors. Um, I do have a new liquor license that will be um, start running for petition. So that will come in front of you in the next thirty to sixty days. Um, the liquor laws are changing every day. Um. One of the proposals out there is preppes- proposal twenty. If proposal twenty passes, the liquor authority board is going to become more involved and more active in the liquor licensing. Um, you all will have to become more active with approving renewals, new applications, transfers and modifications of premises. Um, the way that it's proposed now is that applicants are going to be able to send the, their application to the state and to the city at the same time. So in order for that to take place, I will have to bring the applications in front of the liquor authority board. Or it won't be allowed to be done administratively anymore. It'll have to go to the liquor authority board and signed off by the mayor and the city clerk in order for the state to approve it. Um, unfortunately, that pushes the renewal dates, the application dates and the transfers and modifications back to almost thirty days for approval. So that process will take a lot longer if that does get approved. Um, the last thing I had is we didn't have court in July, so court for next week. We will have about forty five cases. Ready? About ten of those will be carried over from last week, so.
So it's going to be next week, rather than these.
Or not next week, sorry, the sixth week.
Oh.
Sixteen, so next sixteen. My dates are all mixed up, sorry.
Thank you, Nina. Congratulations, dedication. Congratulations on your achievements. Public works. So, so really, on my help, council, you have a written report um, on the streets and the park.
So really, on my help, council, you have written a report um on the streets and the park for the most part. We've been just simply doing stampede um. As was mentioned earlier in these utilities, we do have seven brand new water sewer taps that are actively going on. We're currently working on East Drive. Um at that address on East, we have about another week to get the water line installed. It's about. On their main actually ends before the property, so we're having to do a fairly long run for the service line. So um we also have, just I wanted council to know. I have two things that's in your report that of equipment that has failed on us. Uh one being a lift station in terror of the soul that we have uh Jerry rigged to work. And then our Jackson pump is acting up. Problem with both of those is the equipment that we believe failed. Our the need are not made, you know. We're going through different manufacturers to see what new components we can actually get and try to figure out how much. Of the boxes that we're gonna have to change out to make everything, talk to one another again, so could be a process um. Really on from some of the projects I'm working on like the projects, I thought I'd give you guys a quick update. The air conditioning at the Kids Connection. When we were up there building the frame for the air conditioning, we found a fairly substantial problem with the roof. Um it's a membrane roof and it has come away from the side and it's fallen down. So the entire side of the roof right there where the the panel, the wall comes up is exposed. We're trying to get a roofer in to find that. Our installation of the frame will damage that roof further, so we wanna make sure we have a roofer up there. To correct and fix those areas before we just call it good. So once the air conditioning units are installed, they're not gonna be able to make those repairs. So um the E V charging station is continuing to move really slow. Every time I meet them out there, they're digging another section of grass up, so the holes are getting bigger. But they did run the conduit that we can come on stampede, so they're making some progress on that. So hopefully by the end of the month. I think that project's gonna be closing out. That'll be good. Um skater in the backup generators for our water pumps. This is our fun. We purchased two generators and we have them in our yard. Um we are also working with a company called Timberline Electric for the skater system, so um. Hopefully, you know, November timeframe, we will have that probably kind of knocked up and everything. So on the M O F grant. Um we are in currently in our negotiations on fees and. Hopefully, we have a contract for this on this month. Um our street improvements, Dennis and Patterson are moving forward. They started on July thirteenth. Um as of today, the water line on Patterson, the main line has been installed. Um next week, they'll go ahead and put water in it and start the coloration process. So we can move forward and start the song sort of. So that project's moving along pretty good. Um we do have a little more. Groundwater than what we've seen on the other projects. Um we are hitting groundwater about four feet right now. So we haven't, on all the other street projects that we did, um we haven't hit groundwater until we got to five feet. So right now, we're pumping about a foot of water for every foot we're moving. It's moving slowly, but it's moving. So um with that, I'll open it up for any questions. Do they have anything? Right, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I T, Clamton.
Good evening, Eric Council. It's been quite a busy month for us in I T, a lot of long-term projects. But uh to start it off with, we set up a temporary setup out there for the officers out of Stampede. That way they had some form of command center all there. That way they can print app favors, whatever else they needed. On the back end, we upgraded our VPN server in the tunnel, so that way anyone that was on the VPN client is up to date and everything up. And running with the new software. There shouldn't be any issues going forward. We had some issues with that when it was initially updated, but those have been rectified. We did an account cleanup to remove old employee accounts with from within Google and within our active directory. This is just us cleaning up stuff in the background, making things look pretty. And uh getting some licenses back on the Google side of things. Our network termination point for Sciallo in the back has been replaced. We're having some issues with drops, so we were thinking that might be the issue. Sciallo came out and replaced it for us, and so far we have not noticed any further issues. We have been pulling the I T equipment from the external side of the building to help with uh planning while they're doing the stucco project. That is almost done on our end, and then once all that's done and all the stuff goes up, we will be putting our phone back up on walls as well. And then next week, from um August seventh to August. I won't be in office. I will be partaking in training, get my B and worship vacation. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, and are there any questions?
Appreciate what you do in the background, man.
Alright.
Very much.
Thank you. You guys are wonderful, Nick.
Thank you, you as well. City manager. And do you need a water?
I don't know. I'll just fall down. We just, we're just a walking peach, we just. First of all, I wanna give a a big shout out to our staff for what they did during Stampede. Um Stephanie and her crew at Sky High. Um in visiting with some of the Stampede members, they were very pleased with their performance and what we were able to achieve. Uh Rob and his folks in getting the city looking a little shiny and and uh. And handling the, you know, traffic control during the parade was outstanding. The police department. Worked really well and had so many of the other law enforcement agencies involved that were helpful. Um there were a few few little rough spots, but nothing that couldn't be handled and as a whole, fights were down. So that was a positive. And then um. Kids Connection, they took first place in the in the parade, so they were happy with their float. And then the administrative staff. It stepped up and helped get volunteers and to walk in the parade, so. All in all, it was a great weekend, and I think we can really be proud of our community and and what we got achieved. We had, we had a little bit of a. Of a bummer for news, you know, through the recreational economy for rural communities. We've applied for an AmeriCorps person to be able to organize this, so we can get the community meetings kicked off. And we've got someone that's on task taking care of that. So we did get approval for it. Um. The applicants were due the month of July. We we received one. Looked like an outstanding applicant out of Indiana, and she turned us down. So we're not sure they've left the posting open, whatever that network takes. But we're hoping that we can still get someone that can come in and help us get that off the ground and um. Putting some of those goals into place that that the community came up with way back at the beginning of March. Um last week, I was in Alamosa for today's, the Colorado Water Education Class. They had a water fluency class on the uh regarding the basin of the Rio Grande. And so that has been two online classes. And then two days in Alamosa on in-person, which was nice to see these faces come to life. And then there'll just be one more follow-up month uh next month, and that'll be completed. Senator Bennett is going to be in town on Tuesday, August the eighth. He's gonna take a tour of Sky High. And he'll be out there at ten forty-five and um talk to Aaron Meeks this afternoon. We've kind of got it lined out on what he would, what he's gonna do and and see out there and talk about. His main concern is or interest is in the grant that we will be receiving. For the generator and the showers and the RV spaces. Uh FEMA came back and said that they needed some more information from us, and so George and I. Got that put together and kicked back out to them, so we actually have not received that funding yet, but we'll talk to them about. Where, how far we've come with Sky High and and um what that, how that project will help enhance our emergency and evacuation center. And um talk about any other projects we might have going on there right now. Um and then finally, what do you think of the buildings so far? You notice all the scaffolding? It's been kind of fun to hear some positive comments from people uh in town who've taken notice, so. We're hoping that that will actually get wrapped up in a month. I'm not overly optimistic. They'll get the windows and everything in by that time, but I think at least most of the stucco will all be completed by then. And so it's the exterior. On the the building, it'll be the inside courtyard here, and it will be our little. Uh garage storage. It's to the east of the building, so we're moving forward on it.
What time?
Ten forty-five.
Ten twenty-five.
Ten forty-five on Tuesday.
We are the talk of the town in City Hall.
Are we?
I've been getting multiple calls.
Well, I hope you're positive.
They've been good.
Thank you.
No doubt. Thank you. Council Committee, City Commission, and Council Resort. Mr. Howard, do you have anything to report?
Uh nothing for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Council Locke.
I wanna thank Anita for the financial report and use that as a um. Just a visual aid for all of our people to see shopping local, supporting local. Every single penny helps. If you can't find it locally, please order it. If it's not an emergency, order it. The sales tax still goes here. Um as we saw on the report tonight, sales tax is a huge part of what keeps the city running. So we can't do a whole lot of complaining if we're doing other spending somewhere else.
Done. Done.
Good.
You good?
Well, I'll back up what uh Gigi was talking about, the Stampede Dishar. Um very highly complimented Stephen. Got a phone call and they said Stephanie was on top of everything out there, took care of the Stampede Committee and all, everything that was going on, so. That and thanks everybody for coming to Montevista to attend that. Good to see so many people.
Yes, were you all aware that the electricity went out downtown Saturday afternoon? So we've got some, I was like. Don't know why Excel hasn't given us a reason yet, but we're trying to find out what caused the electric outage because. It impacted the theater and Nino's and Quincy's, and they had to close down and send everybody home and. So um they were disappointed and we got. I got them the claims forms so that they can file a claim on potential lost revenue. But I haven't heard yet what the cause of it was, but it was out for about three hours.
Is that the same one that got Safeway and run their freezers?
There's not very number of just like, look, outages like every day or so.
Yeah, at least once a week, there's an outage for all reasons.
Mr. Richards did have some people show up in the theater asking him if he was still gonna be able to shut maybe. So hopefully we'll get some some answers on that.
Before or after the strike? You're saying.
Yeah.
Well, that being said, Monty Strong, we recess meeting till August.
Eight seventeen.
Seventeen. Thank you guys for all being there.